...
I don't know. We have to move. I don't know. Oh, who won? You know, you have to protect the house. You have to protect your house. You have to protect it right now. You have to protect it. All of them are all all. That's it. This weekend, that's the whole sensation. We have to go holiday. That's it. That's it. Our interest is in my life. But why are you here? And it's just. I'm not going to. Those people, you're going to want to protect what's in my life. It's on your life. The poor ones, the poor ones. It's about. I don't know. I don't know. We just. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's it. Last week, I was scared. I walked from my house to the ball. There you go. And after we were doing this, we were. Open, out, we're in the rain. All of them were getting that. I just don't care. And then, but draw those happy. Practice water is a very simple. So it's at four. That's for the. Now, I want to hear you. Now, I can't. It's definitely the general. And not this. I think this point, although I. I don't know that. Uh, that Denver had any more challenge than we had with the. Or with the young. Actually, we have more. We have been true. You got to tell me. Things have been true. That you had really. Pay attention to your protocols. You better manage. Don't get hit at the surface. Well, yeah, that's that. It doesn't happen to me. Some of them, other ways to put it out. I just thought it's. For one, the one that was convenient, that you want to enter into a government entity. For example, that's this one. To get into things that just come up.
I did this. Since I'm somewhere in my age, my age four, my age six, I feel like it's been ten days. So I think that's a good part. Um, which thing you gotta have. Part of it, people, and you know, I think a lot of that there. There's.
Except the majorly talk is what's the time. Miles is all alive. This is yeah. Actually, now, because of the same change, the founders just were proud. That only makes. All of them. I think it's positive. But even while the government is just out there, they're not going to be. I did, I should have gone down. Um, I think we'll do it. So, um, you gotta, yeah, you gotta make sure it's there. And you see it coming down this year. The rain's black and we started so bad. Forty-four. For whatever way the vow for you go. Authority. Well, next, so. So, oh.
Hey, everybody.
Hi there.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Judy, that's not your little one in the background, is it?
Huh?
It's not your granddaughter in the background, is it? No, I mean with the noise talking.
No.
Oh, it must be on the on the on the um. On here.
Oh.
With your Christmas shopping?
I've got two more, I think. That's. I hope. The problem is, I go and start looking at everything, and I think, oh, no, I forgot so and so. You know. Too many kids to keep up with nowadays. What about you? You got all yours done?
Oh, girl, no, I hadn't even started. My granddaughters, both of them have made out their list. And today's my granddaughter's birth, my daughter's birthday. And then my oldest granddaughter, her birthday comes before Christmas.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah. Plan that perfectly.
Yeah. Yeah. And then they gripe because, oh, yeah, I don't really have birthday, but it's Christmas.
Exactly. Maybe I have to share mine.
Yeah. That's my nephew. That's why he has one.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi there.
Everybody survived.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Stayed home.
Yeah.
Yes.
I saw the wedding pictures over pretty.
Yeah.
We already got married?
Yeah, last Friday.
Tell him I said congratulations.
Most certainly will. They were gonna go to Las Vegas Saturday morning. I was gonna go pick him up at six and take him to the airport. And he started texting me about five forty-five saying, Mom, they canceled our air flight.
Oh, wow.
They canceled. They canceled it so bad, they refunded the money.
Oh, wow.
They didn't go to Las Vegas.
Wow.
Hey, did you get those minutes for the uh animal control thing?
Yes. Did you send them to?
Your email.
City email?
No.
Okay, Yahoo, I got you.
Okay. So be sure to look there.
Yes. Yeah, I was a crazy woman last week.
I know you were.
Nope. Really.
Hey, Rodney.
How are y'all tonight?
Fine, and you?
Good.
It's great.
Great, thank you.
Craig says we're waiting on. Yeah. Or Greg, should we go ahead and do Rodney first?
Yeah, we get started three, and if Greg doesn't show up, it's no big deal. I can fill in there.
Okay. Okay. You ready, Mindy? We live?
Everybody looks comfortable at home, except the mayor.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started at six thirty, so I will call the work session for Tuesday, December the first, twenty twenty, to order. Some members of city council may participate via telephone or video conference. A quorum may or may not be physically possible or present in the city council chambers. Texas Government Code five five one. Point one two seven eight dash two. Citizens wishing to make comments should email m parks at everman tx dot net. M P A R K S at everman tx dot net. Citizens' comments received prior to the meeting adjourned will be read to the council. So we're going to go ahead and drop down to number three, Employee Benefit Renewal Present. I guess presentation by Rodney Dryden with Wealth Bank Insurance Agency.
Thank you, Mayor. Share my screen real quick. All right. Well, thank y'all for taking the time to listen to this tonight. As you know, we go through the process each year of of uh marketing your plans and making sure that we're providing the best programs that we possibly can for the city. You know, we went through the process again this year, and our our best option for our health plan this year is to continue with. Blue Cross Blue Shield with our current plans. The the renewal was a three point one percent increase, which was actually below what we had budgeted at the city. So that was a positive thing. There are a couple of changes to the plans, and I've highlighted those, if you can see my screen. The office co-pay for that first plan increased from thirty and sixty to forty-five and ninety. And then on the third plan, the out-of-pocket increased from eight thousand one fifty to eight thousand five fifty. And then the prescription, I'm sorry, the office co-pay changed from twenty-five and forty-five to thirty and sixty. As a part of the process, we, I'm gonna flip over to the summary page. We sent our, when we took this to market, we looked at, obviously, not just Blue Cross Blue Shield, but we looked at Aetna, we looked at Cigna, we looked at United Healthcare, we looked at T M L. And then we looked at a couple of other options, which is, one is BEFCAP, um, one is um A B A. And based on our our history for the city's plans and utilizations, we just weren't able to provide any options that that provided um better choices for the city and its employees this year. We also shopped our. Our dental coverage and our life and disability as well. We are recommending to the city, and I'm gonna flip to the dental page, we are recommending to the city that we move from MetLife. We've been with MetLife for a long time on our dental plan. We are recommending that we change our dental policy over to a company called Dental Select, a very good dental care provider. We are gonna change the benefits a little bit. Just based on the way your employees are utilizing the plan, we were able to increase that benefit a little bit and still keep cost less than what you're paying right now. So we're gonna save a little bit of money there. We're gonna continue with our current vision provider, which is superior with no change in cost. And then on our life insurance, on the far right-hand side of the page, um, our current life insurance provider is Cigna, which I've highlighted. And um. Our recommendation is that we renew the life insurance with Cigna at this time. And depending on some extenuating circumstances within the covered population of the city, once we get through a couple of things, we're gonna recommend that we actually move our life insurance to One America. Uh, the reason for that is One America offers the same coverage that you have with Cigna, but we can save about fourteen hundred dollars a year. The other programs that we are looking at is right here at the bottom of the page where it says market number five. Those are disability coverages. We're recommending those disability policies through also through One America. And um one is a short-term disability policy, which the city does not currently have, and a long-term disability policy also, which the city doesn't have. So these programs, um, for those of you that are not uh familiar with how disability works, they provide income replacement to employees that may be out for non-work-related illness or injury. So this is a, these are very valuable benefits for employees. Obviously, during the era that we're living in right now, people are really worried about their paychecks. If they go out on a disability, these coverages would help replace a portion of what their income is through the city. So I'm gonna flip back to our summary page here. And down at the bottom of the summary page, you can see along the bottom, um, we talk about your current cost, new cost, and budgeted costs. And then if you look at the far right-hand column that I just highlighted, with the plans we're recommending and the changes we're recommending, as you can see, we're coming in at about five dollars and five cents per employee per month under budget. So we've been able to keep really competitive, um, health, dental, life, vision, and the addition of short and long-term disability, and all remain less than the amount that was budgeted. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I think that's very good, considering. Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, why does it say T M L declined to quote?
T M L declined to quote based upon our claims history.
Is that the claim history high?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I, on my summary page here, you can see that I provided a, just a very brief overview of of our claims history. Our claims history in the last twelve months, where we've paid in um roughly five hundred and. Hmm, sorry, roughly five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in total claims have been paid in the last twelve months. So six hundred thousand in claims, and the city paid between what the city contributes and what your employees contribute through their payroll, about five hundred and forty thousand in premium. So Blue Cross Blue Shield paid out more in claims in the last twelve months than they took in in premium.
And uh, as far as regarding claims, is it job-related?
Uh, no, ma'am. Uh, work-related claims are covered by your workers' comp policy, and those are not reflected in your healthcare claims.
Rodney, on the the life and A D and D, you said we were gonna start off with Cigna?
We are with Cigna now. And because we have an employee that's not actively at work right now, there's some um that adds some complexity. If we change life insurance companies while this person is not actively at work, they could potentially lose their life insurance benefit if something happened to them. And so we're gonna maintain that coverage with Cigna is the recommendation until that person returns to work. And if and if they do not turn, return to work, then we'll have a different decision to make. But in the interim, while we're getting through this period of time, we wanna make sure that that person doesn't lose coverage.
Okay, good.
It's 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 a real tricky situation with waiver of premium, portability, and conversion. Those are options. But because there's a nine-month waiting period for the waiver of premium with Cigna, it adds a layer of complication to transitioning to a new company. So we wanna be real careful that that we don't wanna make a decision that could cause someone to lose a benefit.
Okay, that's, I think we're good with that. We have any other questions?
We do have a little bit more to add. One, one other thing that we would like to uh ask the council for approval on is going to be offering a stipends to employees who opt out of insurance. Uh, so those employees who may have coverage from their spouse or some other form of insurance coverage that choose not to or want to elect to not have city insurance, in lieu of them having our insurance, we'd like to offer them a two hundred and fifty dollar stipend, which would wind up still saving the city money in coming in under budget, uh, but just giving them an opt-out feature. We haven't had that before either.
Two fifty a month?
Yes, two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Why, why would you, why would you do that?
To be hundred percent honest, what is the cost per month on the main insurance, Rodney? Is it nine hundred and eighty-seven?
Nine hundred and um nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nine cents. Some, you have, you, like several cities, have some employees that have other options for healthcare. And so if a person took that stipend option, um, and Craig, I don't wanna speak out of line here.
You're not.
If a person took that stipend option, the net effect is the city would save about seven hundred dollars a month on that employee.
No, no, I I'm aware, but I'm I'm saying, why would you offer a stipend period?
Then there's, if there's no stipends, there's no motivation to not take the insurance. So they would continue to be on the city's insurance, and we would be out that extra seven hundred dollars. That's why most cities offer that stipends, is to kinda give them an incentive to, hey, you've already got an alternative coverage. If you choose to select that coverage, uh, we'll provide you an incentive, and the city has its own incentive by saving money on the budget.
Um, I know Blue Cross Blue Shield is a good insurance. Um, um, why is is Blue Cross Blue Shield the only op- um, options that we we?
So I'll I'll speak on this one real quick. This year, we, when we met with Rodney a couple of months ago, Rodney had mentioned uh that he'd really like to take the wheels off and and research all the different potential options out there. And we agreed with him and asked him to please research any and and all potential options that were available to us. Uh, we researched a couple of different options as well, and what Rodney has brought back is by far the best that we've been, we've been able to to come up with. The biggest thing that's hurting us, uh, or not necessarily hurting us, but that is, uh, limiting our options is going to be the overwhelming amount of claims that we have. Uh, until those claims begin to to settle down, um, it's gonna be difficult to shop for insurance. But we did ask Rodney to to please research any and all potential options.
Can I touch base on the stipends? So um, the total for employee who decides to not to take the insurance that we pay a month is nine hundred and something dollars. So we're gonna give them two fifty out of the seven hundred, so we can save seven hundred dollars a month per employee that chooses not to take the insurance?
That is correct.
So you're saying that if they don't take the insurance, we're still out of pocket the nine hundred and fifty dollars? So if.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be out, we wouldn't be paying for that employee's benefits. So in lieu of paying the nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, we would pay that employee two hundred and fifty dollars, saving the city the difference, the roughly seven hundred dollars.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Remember, that's monthly, so, correct?
Yes.
So that saves quite a bit of money. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, so um, is everybody, so we got seven hundred and two hundred and fifty, that's about nine hundred and fifty dollars a month. The city pays for individuals' life insurance, I mean, health insurance, is that correct?
Yes.
So is it cheaper for some employees and more expensive for others, or do we pay the same premium for each employee every month?
We budget the same amount for each employee every month. Now, the rates do change slightly, and Rodney can probably elaborate on that, depending on which plan they choose. For example, they choose an H M O or an H S A account versus the the base plan that we have. Uh, Rodney, can you go into the differences there?
You bet. So, so the city, the city budget has budgeted nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, or that's the amount that's before you. And with that nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, the employees of the city of Everman have this choice of four different plan options. And so they can take that nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and choose the very best plan that the city offers, or they may select a plan that may have higher deductibles, higher copays, or an H S A. And so from a budgeting perspective, the the cost to the city is the same. The employees are just giving given options on how that dollar is spent that fits their family. Because allowing that, you have some employees that have selected, as an example, the H M O option at a lower cost. But the difference between the H M O employee-only premium of five twenty-nine and the P P O premium of nine sixty-nine, employees are able to apply that difference toward the cost of dependents, which has been critical in the making it a possibility for some of your employees to cover dependents. Um, historically, the city has had relatively low dependent participation because of affordability. And with this addition of the H M O a couple of years ago, it's made the option of being able to provide coverage to a spouse or children or a full family a real possibility for some of your employees that never had that option before. They just couldn't afford it.
Okay.
Uh, I have one other question. If they decide not to take the insurance, um, do they have a choice as far as the life and disability of insurance?
That's a great question. And that stipend, and Craig, correct me if I'm misstating this, but the stipend applies. That's a great question. And that stipend and Craig, correct me if I'm misstating this, but the stipend applies only to healthcare. They would be provided with the life insurance and the disability coverage regardless of whether or not they participated in the health plan.
That is correct. And as a part of the stipends, they will be required to show proof of some sort of health insurance coverage. So they can't just opt out of the insurance and not have any insurance and receive a stipends. They must have some short, some sort of insurance coverage. And that's for the protection of the employee.
And they will sign a form that says if they lose that other coverage and need to be added back to the city's plan, they lose that stipend and it is replaced with the healthcare benefit.
That sounds good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
The the one other thing I do want to just highlight, and I don't know if I know you mentioned it, but the short-term disability and the long-term disability are two things that we have not offered before. Uh, we do have roughly, what, twenty employees that are uh paying for additional insurance through third parties for that type of disability. Um, we thought that that was a great option that Rodney brought to us that we certainly would like to include. Uh, because it it seems that every year we have at least one employee uh, that would need a short-term or a long-term disability benefit. Uh, that do not have the ability to afford a third-party provider for that.
So there's no additional cost to the city, correct?
No, we're gonna come in even with that. We're gonna come in five dollars and five cents or something along those lines under budget.
Those two policies?
Yes.
Okay.
With those two policies, in addition to everything else, you'll come in under budget.
But then the individuals that have outside policy, they can decide whether to stay on that or come inside.
They can elect whether to keep it or not.
Okay.
That's correct.
Is the dental and vision optional?
No, ma'am.
All employee cost is paid by the city.
So the city's paying for all of the medical, life insurance, at this point disability?
Well, as of today, as of today, we are not paying for any sort of disability.
You're asking for.
Yes, correct. That is what we're asking.
And even with all of the extra short and long-term disability and the stipend thingies and all of that, throw all of that in the wash tub, shake it out, dump it through the strainer, we're gonna be five dollars ahead on the budget per person?
Per month, yes, ma'am.
Per month. Ooh, a hundred bucks a month.
What, sixty bucks per person?
Oh, I thought he said we were five dollars.
Well, for the year.
If you have fifty employees at five dollars, that's gonna be two hundred and fifty a month or three thousand a year under budget. And then, as Craig pointed out, if you have one person that takes the stipend, that is immediately eighty-four hundred dollars a year additional that the city has saved.
But if they take a plan that goes over the nine sixty-nine, then that comes out of the employee's pocket at that point.
Absolutely correct.
When they add all these things in and, you know, they just depend on what plan they take, then it could cost the city, the employees a little bit of money.
That's exactly right. The city is fixing its cost for healthcare at nine sixty-nine. And so you can see the total cost. If if you added the two disability plans highlighted there in blue is a thousand thirty-nine dollars. That's the average cost. Now, if you have one person that takes the stipend, obviously, it makes that average lower. So it's just a matter of, you know, how it shakes out. But at the end of the day, we're five dollars and five cents under budget. If everyone takes the healthcare. If one person takes the stipend or three people take the stipend, the savings below budget will be much greater than five dollars per employee per month.
Either way, you're saving.
Okay, I think I was I think I was merging the two and then the math wasn't working out. So if if one employee takes the stipend, they get two hundred and fifty dollars a month as a thank you or whatever. And then the city is saving seven hundred dollars a month per employee because we're not paying the insurance, et cetera. Because they're taking the stipend.
That's exactly right. It's it's really more than that. It's seven hundred and nineteen dollars. So just quick math in my head, that's almost eighty-six hundred dollars a year.
Per employee that takes the stipend?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, all right. I I I was messing up the math. Okay, I got it now. Okay.
Any other questions?
Considering all the health crisis, I think this is a very good, good thing.
Either way, you're saving.
Yeah, it's very good.
It it could have been much worse.
Yeah, really.
Your staff has done a good job looking at all of this.
We actually have the option to give a few more benefits to the employees, so. So, okay, if we're done with that, uh, Rodney, appreciate you joining us and we're gonna move on. We'll be voting on this next Tuesday.
Sounds great. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to number one, a potential award construction contract for forty-six-year CDBG Corey Road and Kelly Drive Water System Improvements Project to the evaluated low bid provider as recommended by the city's engineer to Atkins Brothers Equipment Company for the total base bid amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Um, I was hoping our city engineer was gonna be here, but uh, this is this is really just another one of the projects, many projects that we have going on. Uh, bids were collected uh and reviewed by our city engineer um, for both the CDBG project and the next item, which will be another one of the TWDB projects. He has evaluated the low bid provider as Atkins Brothers at the hundred ninety-five thousand, which came in significantly under what his uh engineering's evaluation was. So the low bid provider came in significantly under. I was hoping to give you that exact amount, but I do not have that. Uh, once we get through the next item, I'll tell you what the total savings for both project, all the T TWDB projects will be, which is close to half a million dollars. Um, this item will be on the agenda next week for uh approval and award. Um, so if we have any questions between now and then, I can certainly get those answered from the engineer.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, as far as paying for this, is this one of the things that that was approved ear- earlier this year?
Yes, ma'am. This is the this is the uh annual CDBG project. This particular one is a project. The next one uh that we're gonna discuss is a Texas Water Development Board project, which is uh covered by that loan that we took.
Well, this one here is paid for by the county.
Correct.
And the one good thing about it, if we stay under budget, that money is still our money and in two years, we've got additional funds that we can use for our projects.
Correct. And that that amount that he has put on here has come in under what he projected the cost.
Any questions on this?
No.
Okay, let's drop down to number two, uh award the construction contract for Enon Avenue and Christopher Drive Water System Improvements to the evaluated low bid provider as recommended by the city's engineer Gomez Brothers Construction Incorporated for a total base bid amount of one million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars.
Same thing as previously. This is just gonna be a Texas Water Development Board project, which is covered by that uh water system loan that we took out. Um, the Gomez Brothers are the ones that at the last council meeting, we awarded the other portion of the TWBB project to. Uh, they came in as a little bidder on both projects, around both bids.
Those are water lines.
Yes, this is the water line replacement. Yes, sir. Um, what I do want to point out is is altogether, I received an email from our city engineer. Uh, he projected total cost for the Texas Water Development Board loan that we took out as two point four million, uh, almost two point five million. That was the amount that we took out as a loan. Uh, now that all bids have been placed, we are coming in with the bids at one point nine million. Uh, which is saving us roughly half a million dollars as long as we don't have any overages. Um, there aren't anticipated to be any overages. There are, there is always the chance. We won't know that exact savings amount until the projects are completed. Uh, but uh, we can certainly anticipate significant savings on the Texas Water Development Loan. Uh, we'll be able to uh either return that loan amount or that difference or apply that difference back towards payments on the loan. Either way, um, we're gonna save pretty much half a million dollars on this project. So that's a, that's some really good news.
Any questions?
Uh, yes, on Enon, uh, what work was what wasn't there some work done on Enon? Down past um, the the fire department then up further back by Wichita?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, that was a part of the CDBG project from the previous year. Uh, that was a water line replacement that took place from, um, I don't think it was quite to Enon. I think it was Floyd Street down to Christopher Drive, if I remember correctly. Um, or I'm sorry, Wichita to to Christopher Drive. Um, I can pull those details up and send those to you, but this will, uh, this is the other half of Enon. This is uh coming in front of the Fire Station Police Department down on the west end of Enon Avenue, towards Forest Hill Drive.
Okay, so uh, that was that a water main break that was right there uh past the that they they fixed that was that was being worked on?
In front of the in front of the police department?
There a little past the uh, once you cross Royce Brooks. Was those water main breaks that they were fixing?
That was that was a boring company that came in that was running fiber optic lines that bored through multiple uh water lines there. Um, they covered a significant portion of the cost to repair those water lines. But yes, that's when they had to dig up the several different patches in the roadway. Um, that was due to the boring. That wasn't due to just water main breaks.
Okay.
That is the portion of the line that is gonna be replaced.
Okay, my next question is, will they widen Enon with the traffic?
That wouldn't be associated with this. That would be part of a master thoroughfare plan. Um, which we do have uh Enon on our master thoroughfare plan as being widened to a three-lane road. But there's a lot of logistical issues there, uh, the fact that it's in a floodplain, uh, the amount of land available to the city to widen it. Um, and it's certainly something that we're looking at into in the future, but not associated with this project.
Right, but when they um repair, they're going to redo the that part of the road, correct?
They are only going to patch what is dug up for the water lines. So road road replacement is not a portion, is not a part of this project. Only only patch and repair essentially.
Okay.
The road will not be great, to be honest.
So so they're not digging up the roads? They're just going under underneath it?
They're gonna dig up about half the road, yes, ma'am. But uh, to replace the water line and then they will pretty much put a patch over the top.
Okay.
Just just remember, when we start talking about widening that road, that's a lot of additional costs just doing the road. Because we have to do some uh acquiring of some property, there's probably gonna be some utilities being moved and they can turn a, you know, million-dollar project into two or three million-dollar project, so. So like Craig said, uh, that had to be a master thoroughfare on that plan, so.
Yeah, that's on our wish list for sure.
We have any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to know, chief, uh, you said the company that was boring into the street paid for a portion of fixing what they broke? They didn't pay for all of that?
I will have to, I would have to go back and look, ma'am. I I don't, that was, that was a while ago. I would have to go back and see what the cost and what how much we recovered from that company was, but I can research that if you'd like.
I just would like to know if they paid for what they broke.
They should.
Yes.
This was probably year and a half, two years ago.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
Yeah, I will. I will certainly research that one.
In your spare time between two and four AM, right?
Let me let me rephrase that. I will ask somebody else to research that.
There you go.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, let's drop down to city manager's report.
Um, I do have a few things, um, some some good and 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 bad news. Uh, obviously, I just mentioned that we're we're looking at saving roughly half a million dollars on the Texas Water Development Board projects. Um, we kind of put the cart before the horse, so to speak, when we took out that three-point-eight-million-dollar bond. Uh, the numbers that were utilized for that bond were not professional numbers that were received by anybody. That was uh pretty much just a guesstimate on how much money would be required to satisfy the build for a new civic center and fire station and so forth. Um, we have now received uh our numbers back from the contractors. And uh, we can certainly, within the three-point-eight-million dollars that was received, complete the water projects, which are actually coming in under what was anticipated. But to complete the fire station and and city hall annex rebuild, those are coming in higher than what was anticipated. Um, one thing that was not figured at the time of the of the bond review was a parking lot for the new civic center. Uh, that parking lot is rather expensive. Um, to do so, we are looking at roughly half a million dollars short on what we would need to complete everything appropriately. Uh, don't let that put the put you into a panic. We've got a potential solution that we are looking at, uh, that will not impact the budget this year. Um, and we are looking at uh potentially uh reaching out to the Economic Development Board for assistance with that part to satisfy that. But I do want to let you know that we are coming up short from that three-point-eight-million dollars to complete everything the way that we had talked about and wanted, including a parking lot, which is helpful when you have a new building. Um, and uh, we do have a way of of uh financing this out over some some time. Uh, that will be limiting the impact to our budget, not only this year, but for the next seven years. Uh, and it will not affect, yeah, it will not affect our credit rating. It will not affect our ability for loans. It shouldn't affect anything else. So uh, we've been working and talking with um our uh financial advising firm, uh, Andrew Friedman. And he has uh come up with a plan to assist us with finding this additional funds that aren't gonna hurt the city and allow us to achieve the goal that we set out to achieve in the beginning. Um, the other thing I wanted to address is uh, we do have a COVID-nineteen pandemic going on. Uh, not not just in in the world, but we've got a somewhat of an outbreak within the police department and a couple of employees within city hall. Uh, so we've taken a lot of um preventative measures. City Hall is remaining closed in the lobby. The drive-through is open. We do have several employees who are doing some kind of hybrid working between uh, working some in the office and working some at home. All those employees are communicating with me on a daily basis. Uh, so everything that's would normally be done on a day-to-day basis is still being done. Um, over the last couple of days, you might have seen um some other police agency vehicles in our city. Uh, we have received some assistance from Dowworth and Gardens DPS and Forest Hill Police Department on making sure that we have adequate police coverage. Uh, I now have twelve employees within our police department who have tested positive for the virus. So we've we've pretty much run real short, real short. Um, so we've got some assistance that has been helping us out. Uh, we do have a few of those employees that are scheduled to return to work. All the employees are are experiencing uh mild to moderate symptoms, no hospitalizations. Everybody seems to be handling it quite well. It's just a matter of time uh, for them to be out to recover appropriately from the virus, but everybody seems to be doing really well with it. Um, we continue to see rising numbers, not just within Tarrant County on COVID, but we are seeing roughly five to ten new cases within our city a day. Uh, the spread is 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 very uh high right now. Uh, with that being said, the fire department has made the decision that they're gonna go ahead and cancel the drive-through for the Christmas festival. Obviously, we are not going to be doing any sort of Christmas tree lighting. Uh, we have also decided that we are not going to do uh any sort of of luncheon for the employees that we would normally do this year. Um, simply because it's just way too risky. Uh, we are doing everything we can within city hall and all the departments to try to limit the number of people gathering together. Uh, Thanksgiving was pretty much ruined for for several employees because of this virus, and I want to do my very best to try to keep Christmas from being the same way. So we are doing everything we can to stay away from each other and stay healthy and stay safe.
What about the parks?
Parks are still open. Um, we have not, I honestly haven't even thought about addressing the parks. We haven't seen much activity from the parks other than the basketball court.
Right.
The basketball court is is popular. I can tell you even when we lock that gate, they're gonna they're gonna get in. Uh, when we locked it before, we had some criminal mischief because they wanted to get in. Um, so I think Um, so I think, uh, I think when it comes to that level, can, I, I, my opinion would be continue with public education, trying to push out the safety and the protocols and the CDC guidelines and try to educate as much as possible. Uh, but I don't think it's worth causing damage to our parks by forcing them closed either at the same time.
I agree.
Also, there, there are quite a few smaller numbers of people there. I drive by there all the time. Of course, I'm Pokemoning. And, uh, the numbers are incredibly smaller than, of course, from what they used to be. Even when it's cold, there's people out there, but the numbers are a lot smaller.
I was by one day and there was about twenty, twenty of them and one of them. And I thought, wow.
That's not very many. Sometimes it's packed.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Uh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I was gonna go back, ask, uh, regarding, um, why, why are you draining, why is the city draining the EDC fund for, for different projects?
So we're not, yeah, we're not looking to, to drain anything. We're, we're certainly not to look, looking to do that. Um, and I was gonna reserve the details for the EDC meeting itself and let them make a determination before we brought it back to council. I was just letting you, kind of giving you an, an early heads up on what's, what's to come. Um, but, uh, there will be an EDC meeting scheduled to present this to EDC for your consideration. Um, we're certainly not making any, any decisions here. Um, and I'm not making any decisions, but we, we do have a plan that we would like to propose to the EDC for, for you to consider. Um, that would not impact, uh, the funds that, that you guys have significantly. We're not coming, we're not gonna come to see, to EDC and ask you to, to give us half a million dollars. That's, that's certainly not what we're asking.
Um, my next question is at the, at our next meeting, could you update the council on how the veterans memorial project is going?
Let me see if I can get, uh, uh, yes ma'am, I certainly can. Uh, I'll make sure that happens. I would probably prefer Nicoletti to do that, but I can make that happen.
Okay, let me ask you something real quick. On this three point four million, wasn't that the recommendation that we got to do?
The, it was, it was three point eight million. There are two, there were two portions of that project. The water, the water system improvement portion and then the city improvement portion. The water system improvement portion had a certified engineer or city engineer who conducted the evaluation on cost. So those numbers, we, those numbers we knew firmly. The other half was recommendations from a couple of architects on what it might cost. Uh, there was never any firm numbers that were proposed for this. The process should have been done in reverse where we conduct an RFP RFQ on the city hall annex and a fire station rebuild. And then once a project is selected and we know what the cost of that is, then we should have gone out for the bond. So we kind of did it backwards.
Yeah, I knew you said that, but I thought, well, isn't this the same, the, was it Freeman? Is that what you said?
Uh, yes, Freeman is the one who assisted us with.
Recommended it to begin with?
Well, he didn't, he didn't recommend, yeah, he didn't recommend the dollar amount. He was, the dollar amount we would need to complete the projects. So he recommended the vehicle to get that amount. Um, he certainly didn't come up with the numbers that, that, uh, we got. Um, one thing that wasn't thought of was a parking lot for the new civic center, which came in at three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. So we overlooked that. Um, there's also a little, little overages here and there on, on the anticipation, so roughly we're looking at, at half a million dollars.
Yeah.
I think, you'd think after Johnson Park, we would have remembered a parking lot. Just a little. All over again.
Thought about the parking lot during the design phase, but it was not thought about when we were calculating for a bond. And those bond numbers were, were pulled together, um, in a rush and
Pretty fast.
Without proper research, so.
We had a lot going on.
Do that again.
Uh, no ma'am. So. But we do have, we do have a good solution. Um, I, I, at least I believe it's a good solution. Obviously, that would be up to the EDC board and then ultimately city council will determine if that's a good solution. That is, again, not going to impact general, uh, uh, the budget. Uh, in a lump sum, I mean, there, there will be an impact to the budget, obviously, but it's not going to be anything catastrophic and, and nothing I'm expecting to really impact their, our operations at all.
How is it gonna affect the budget?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're taking additional half a million dollars, there's gonna be some sort of impact to the budget. But again, I'd like to, I'd like to reserve the details of that for the EDC commission to decide first before it comes back to council.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, mayor's report. The only thing I have is, uh, Patricia Ward with the Tarrant County, uh, Community Development. She's retiring at the end of December. So, uh, she's gonna be greatly missed, but she, she's been helping me out considerably with the mayor's council. Um, don't know who her replacement's gonna be, but, uh, they don't, had to decide if they're gonna go inside or outside to replace her. Uh, maybe he's gonna send her flowers, uh, on Monday. Okay. And of course it'll be for me, but then it'll save, uh, from city council and Everman staff. So just to kind of thank her for everything she's done for us. So, um, and other than that, we're not doing our yearly mayor's council meeting that we do every December. We're doing it, but it's gonna be virtual. You know, typically we do a dinner every year, but, uh, we can't do it because of COVID, so. It's been a heck of a year for being the chair of the committee and not being able to get anything done, so. Uh, but that's all I got. Uh, next time citizens comments. We don't have anything, so we are adjourned.
No, I was just gonna, one, I'm sorry.
Oh, hold on a second.
One last thing, though, I, I did forget to mention that the library is closed to the public. Employees are still coming in and performing work, but we have decided to go ahead and keep the library closed to the public for, for right now, uh, at least through, through the Christmas holiday. As long as, as long as the city hall lobby is closed, we'll keep, we'll keep the library closed.
Okay.
But those employees are still coming to work.
Okay.
Well, that being said, we are adjourned.
Have a good.